I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call and declaration of form.
Dr. Matusik.
Here.
Mr. Lau.
Here.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Present.
Mr. Cho.
Here.
I'd like to welcome all our visitors. Thank you for attending this evening's meeting. I didn't have anyone contact me for agenda item two.
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody on the speaker list? Okay, very good. No one on the speaker list, that's fine, thank you. Agenda item three, consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull out for discussion?
I'd like to get on the agenda.
I'm having the same issue.
Instead of this thing.
Oh, I'm on.
I'm on.
Let's go.
I'll deny it, stay.
What can we do to resolve them?
How do I get off this screen? Enter, I've hit escape. Do I go to the Chrome?
Is it because my wife has one of those? She's at OSU. Probably.
You're a beach.
There you go.
Are you ready, Mr. Griffin?
She worked there.
Okay, agenda item three, consent agenda. Once again, if anyone has anything they'd like to pull off of that consent agenda for discussion, I'd be happy to accommodate you. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that.
Dr. Matusik.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Aye.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Agenda item four, regular business. 4.1, discussion of possible board action regarding COVID relief construction application to repair the track facility for use as an outdoor classroom.
So with the COVID, the third round of SRR money that we received, there's approximately $2.9 million that we have to spend over the next three years, has to be spent by fiscal year '24. Of that, 20% has to be dedicated to loss of learning. So in what you just approved, there's about $175,000 worth of curriculum that we purchased and will continue to purchase over the next three years, around $600,000 for that. So leaving a balance of around $2.6 million over the three years. So what this application is, is you can apply, in a lot of schools, it's for creating more space within your district, anything that relates to construction. And they have a list of pre-approved items where like you can replace HVAC, you can do certain things that are already pre-approved. But something outside the normal, like some schools, a friend of mine, they have, they're getting like 1,800 square feet added to their boardroom, because that's their professional development, where they have meetings where they can space people out. So people are trying classrooms, some people don't get enough money. So with us, what we're trying to do, and that's the reason it's referred to as an outdoor classroom, and that's about as much guidance as I can get from a gentleman at the State Department without telling me yes or no prior to it. But creating for that outdoor track and utilizing it more as an outdoor classroom, as you've read through the application, trying to sell the mental health aspects for kids also can get out of the gym, you know, and do things outside, fresh air. Because the part of the things with that application is it's prepare, prevent, and respond to future pandemics, current pandemic. Try to tie in a little bit of the community aspect of getting people from the community involved with the track, but really, that's the reason it's labeled as the outdoor classroom. It takes about two weeks for them, with all the applications they have coming in, to get approval on it. But the number I gave you was the highest bid, basically two companies that we talked to. And one company gave two bids, they basically quoted a Chevrolet track, and they also gave a Rolls-Royce track, if you will. So that's the highest price, that's the worst-case scenario. Tonight, we're not talking about approving any purchase of the track. If it gets to that point that they apply, that they approve this, then we would start the selection process, bring in the track vendors, how did you get to these numbers, and all those things. Right now, we're just strictly approving if you want this application, where it would take out the 900, at most 919,000 out of that 2.0. If they deny us, then I'll come back to you and say, okay, now our options are, we can look at general fund, we can look at building fund, we can look at a lease purchase, and that's about our only options, are preparing that without going to a bond issue. So that's kind of where our choices are right now, this kind of step. So not approving that we're getting this vendor, that would come later, come next month if this is approved. If not, I'll come back to you next month, say it wasn't approved, do we want to move forward, here's our current financial picture, you know, what do you guys want to do?
Anyone have any discussion at this point?
I'll make a motion to approve the COVID relief construction application to repair the track facility and use as an outdoor classroom.
I'll second that.
Dr. Matusik.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Aye.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes. Agenda item 4.2, discussion possible board action regarding adding policy item number 432, prohibition of race and sex discrimination in curriculum and complaint process policy.
If you remember, it was passed legislative session, you know, the legislature passed a bill that banned the teaching of critical race theory. A lot of that stems from really what universities were doing, it's not what pre-K through 12s were doing. But nonetheless, when they implemented this, they required that each school have their local policies. You know, when we're talking about policies, and we'll talk about one here in a minute, that's a discretionary policy. This is a statutory policy, where OSSBA Legal Services, they sent us out what they had on this ban. And what it does is it bans the teaching of race or sex discrimination, which, you know, good educators have never taught that anyway, but now it really puts a power in the ministry's lap, where if a teacher is doing that, then there's a punch to it. And then also, it's the complaint process, that if somebody feels that a teacher was veering off and, you know, promoting or putting down something because of race or sex, then there's a complaint process, where it lists that the complaint process, it comes to me, has a phone number, and it starts the grievance process at that point in time. So it puts just a little teak into it. Every district is required to have this policy. Like I said, Julie Miller with OSSBA Legal Service, Policy Service, many of you have worked with her probably before, they send this out, they send everything out that's statutory, and of course, then I had Phyllis review it and said, good as is, so.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Dr. Matusik.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Aye.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Agenda item 4.3, discussion of possible board action regarding amendment to faculty dress code policies, items 312 and 416.
So this really started a couple months ago, when we talked about, you know, enforcing the student dress code, and then was brought up about, hey, if we need to enforce teacher dress code as well, and, you know, I said absolutely, and then so I thought, well, I better know what the teacher dress code is. So the next day, then we get that out, and then I find one, and then I think Todd had found another, so we actually had two, and that's the first hand out there. So when we decided, we talked about it at the principals' meeting, Barry, Mr. Crosswhite, took that, took the lead on this, and there's a description in there, he'd take any questions of how we got to this point of where we came up with the proposed dress code policy. I will say this, and it was brought up at the meeting today, that, you know, principals have noticed, just the discussion alone has kind of moved everybody, I mean, you know, support personnel, everybody, just to, you know, we all need to be reminded every now and then to sit up in our chair. And with the COVID, I think everybody, including, you know, where I was before, I think got just a little lax, and everybody hasn't been any issues. I have, walking through the halls, I haven't seen anybody that I felt was in violation of it, and so I take questions, I know we got a couple principals covering some activities, but I know the principals will take questions from staff or anybody.
So you feel the amendment as written would allow you to have a stronghold on changing any problems that you see?
I feel, that's what we talked about.
And your administration.
Yeah, our weekly leadership meetings, we talked about that, we've talked more about dress code over the last, you know, month and a half or so. We revisited today, and I think everybody is in favor of it, the teachers are on board with it, you know, they helped write it. And so everybody was sending an email, giving an opportunity to voice any concerns that they may have, and, you know, it's definitely more defined than what a lot of districts have, a lot of them don't have anything, so.
So the previous policy, there's two items, 312 and 416.
Yes.
Are we removing one of the items, since we're, the proposal is only for 416?
So we just, basically eliminating 312, and then combining it, and what you see in that second page is the combined version, but get rid of where it's not policy book twice.
So there's not a 312 and a 416, it's just 416?
It's gonna be 416 now.
And it's in its revised form?
And it's a combination of 312 and 416, some things were added, some deleted, but it's a combination of those two.
Well, I do want to commend and applaud the previous writer of this for, you know, taking a stand against Crocs, because I think that was unfortunate.
Someone I'm favorite lip gloss now.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Dr. Matusik.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Aye.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
Agenda item 4.4, discussion of possible board action on items related to the purchase of real property.
So this is the corner lot that we purchased at auction, Mr. Cho was able to go with me. When we signed the paperwork that day, they said that the abstract office, our title company would be in touch with us by the 20th of this month. Have not heard up from them to date, so I called them, and they said that the abstract company said they should have it by the end of this week. So I put it on there just in case that we get it today by chance, didn't think we would, but I'll end up putting that on there for next month, but it'll be a seamless process on there. And once we get that signed, of course, I'm already authorized to sign the paperwork. So then the discussion next month that we have would be, you know, as landlords, visiting with tenants, and looking at exit procedure without trying to shut down anybody's business, obviously, you know.
So do you need action?
No, there's no action, they're still wanting to give you an update, and I put it on there just in case there needed to be an action. But don't know any more than that on that facility.
What will that property be used for?
That would be discussion for down the road, two or three different ideas, but nothing's been finalized.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item five, new business.
I have no new business, need board approval.
Agenda item six, superintendent's report.
So facilities, just wanted to update you, I gave you a handout, and if you'll hold it to where the red, that is the early childhood center.
Did you illustrate?
No, no, I don't know who did. So I can't take credit for that, because that's a lot better than I would do. But in, you know, in the enclosures, and you're gonna see more, with the outdoor classroom, you may have heard a little bit of talk of where they're wanting to do it, so I went down there, Ms. Mack had already had this drawn up, but you can see the different areas in here of what they have, and you guys, Ms. Mack, you want to tell them a little bit more about it, because I know it's you and your teachers that have worked on this.
Yeah, it's just kind of what Mr. Starmer reasoning with that, the track is just to keep us outdoors and social distancing and fresh air. And so we have a meeting area under the big tree, the seating and picnic tables, where they can do their lessons outdoors. We also have, a lot of times, the early childhood learns-through play, and so they may read a recipe card, and then do an outdoor kitchen area for that. We'll have an exploration area, that's more like steam activities, and then sensory station, we might have a balance beam and a little tunnel and different things they can walk around for balance. We're also gonna have a stage area, where we can like maybe read the book under the tree, and then go act it out on the stage. We also can have our parents come up, and we can perform different things out there with seating. We're gonna, we have some grants that have been approved, and we're gonna leave vegetable garden beds there in that area. We'll have a water exploration area with a kind of a trough ramp that goes down, it's really cool, and then some art easels as well. We are having a heritage night, Thursday night, from six to eight, to kind of incorporate all of our cultures here in Tennessee, and we're gonna have a marachi band and a polka band, and have some art and different types of foods, burritos and hot dogs and anything, and piñatas.
Surely kolachis and smoky.
Kolachis, kolachis, we're having kolachis, you have to say.
Your granddad was a man.
And it'll all be out here in the outdoor classroom, so I'm really excited.
You said grants are being paid, that have been applied for, they've been granted, that's part of this?
Yeah, on the garden beds, yes, we've got some of that, we've also got, the teachers have joined in with the outdoor classroom committee, I know they've written some grants for the Tennessee Foundation, Education Foundation, and so hopefully we'll get some of those along with that SRR money, hopefully.
I would just ask, I would just ask that the water exploration area not be nicer than our splash pad and pool.
What kind of security for this, is it gonna be gated and fenced?
That is fenced right now.
It is?
That's that area where that drive-through, yeah, and they close out, and cars are done, what, 18 or whatever it is, so that area is already fenced in.
Is it ever gonna be covered, for shade for the kids in the heat?
That might be another stage, I hopefully guess that's the idea, the plan, but right now, we're just going with the items.
Definitely gonna be a continuous work in progress, because just like that, I told her offhand, I said, you need to shoot bigger, I said, that whole area, I'd either make concrete or artificial turf, you know, the way the kids come out there and it's raining, they can sit under a carport, and, you know, plus they're not weed-eating and all that stuff going around with the kids tomorrow, so, you know, areas where they're gonna be playing a little bit or getting down, I was like, with outdoor turf, it's not much more expensive than concrete, and it's cooler and it looks better. So it'll be a continuous work in progress, which I think is great, and there's a lot of areas.
What's the timeline?
This part of, this first phase, I asked her the same thing, just as quick as possible, and that's makes it nice, whatever, after we have our grant review meeting with the foundation on the 28th, you know, I'll be able to see how much more that, that maybe we can pick up out of the SRR money.
Could any of that COVID, those COVID funds?
That's, that's, COVID or SRR, I'm using them the same way, yes, that's it, yes. Because being additional space qualifies, yeah. So any questions on outdoor classroom?
Wonderful.
Still waiting on, gentlemen, who about to give us a quote on the bleachers for the baseball field, the south side of that first base there. And then also, one of the things that qualifies, you know, with air quality and replacement is if we wanted to consider, and I've got quotes on them, putting HVAC, we've got heat in them, but putting HVAC in the current, the old high school gym, and then the middle school gym, putting in both of those, that way it's not staying there. You've got PE classes that are using those, you know, the wrestling room, obviously, they probably want heat in at times, but Mr. Crosswhite has to use that too, at times during the day for, for PE, so.
Were all facilities, you mentioned E classes, and OSSA just approved esports.
Uh huh.
I know, if we were to participate in esports, we're gonna have to have a place to do so.
Yep.
Has there been any plans?
We have not, just because of this, this week, we've talked about the possibility of doing it, it's coming, the esports is literally just a, where now a kid can win an OSSA state championship on, you know, the platform, depending what video game there are, there is. And these are not just, you know, nice laptops, that these gaming systems are to be the best, these gaming centers that they have, it's gonna require a dedicated space, sponsor.
Bandwidth.
Bandwidth, that's his question.
Pretty good, man.
So, but obviously, it's gonna take up some, yeah. So yeah, that's, it's definitely coming, and it's something we've got to prepare for, because they, I think Amy Miss Castle said that they project 60 schools, I think there'll be.
Double that.
Double that, yeah. And then the classifications of it, you know, I mean, you know, you take a large 6A school, they qualify, maybe 10, 15 teams, I mean, do they get that multiple representative? They don't do it in basketball, so. And transfers and hardship issues are just as relevant in esports as they are in our current sports. Yeah, kids recruiting to go build another team in another district, it stays, yeah, have to apply for hardship, remove a district, or, yeah, it's, it'll be interesting to see how that develops, but, yeah, we know that's coming, Mr. Griffin, back to your original question. And money can be spent, SRR money can be spent on that. So that's all I have on facilities, if nobody has any questions for me.
You were talking about AC for those buildings.
For the middle school gym and the high, the old high school.
What's your thought there, what's the process like?
So we just have to get a quote, I mean, and I've got quotes on them, and they're both below 50,000 for both gyms, I mean, each, 50,000 each. Each? Yeah.
What type of systems they're talking about?
Talking about, I'll have to show you the quote.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see, because I know, like, when we did the dome, we did those mini splits, which those are really inexpensive and very efficient to use.
There was a reason that they couldn't do mini splits.
Okay.
And I visit, we've had major mechanical out in refrigerations, so if there's anybody else that you want us to refer to, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to contact any other companies, so.
Well, those are really big spaces, you know, we've got separate spaces.
The big gym, I think, was, the big gym was two 510 units, they thought that would be more efficient.
Wow, that's nice.
Yeah. And then of course, middle school gym, which would be a lot smaller.
Two 510, lack of insulation too.
Right.
Just because that dome is, oh yeah, the ultimate insulation.
Yeah.
All that efficiency.
It's just like it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to see.
You bet, you bet. Any other question on facilities? One resignation received, Yumira Torres, and then the last thing, career tech membership. I know going through the interview process, you guys informed me kind of the process of when Mr. Thomas and the representative from Autry Technology Center were here. Obviously, with me being new, each of those had new directors, you know, I visited with both of them, they're both interested in us joining, trying to do that, but then, you know, I know Luke today, he's asked some questions, Dr. Matusik and I talked a little bit about it, but just seeing the process, because if we do decide that something, we're gonna call for a resolution to have an election of voters, obviously, you have to decide which one first, and so there is a cost difference a little bit. Not, not, I don't think as much as what it was the first time, but because evaluation's gone up, but it's still, there is a little bit of a difference. Obviously, you know, one of them, it's gonna be a little more expensive, has more programs, choose from is a little closer, the other one, costs a little less, but doesn't have quite the programs, and, you know, then you could look at the possibility of just staying independent and paying tuition per kid, if you have someone that want to finish up a career tech at Chisholm Trail, or someone that want to start a program at Autry. And so I think we've just gotta look at every option, but obviously, it starts here, because if you guys want, I can bring in the directors from those, from the career techs, you know, over the course of the next couple months, and kind of go through that process again and see where we're at, but obviously, we'd entertain questions you guys may have.
Well, do you know if Chisholm Trail offers like marketing and things for people to get the thing?
Actually, we have somebody from Chisholm Trail, not here tonight on this, she's done observations. Ms. Myers, do you know, would there be, I hate to put you on the spot.
No, it's fine, we do not have marketing right now. Really, anything business-oriented is just like graphic design, accounting?
No, I'm saying more in line for like if we're gonna do the election, because I know, like, that's a big part of it, is getting it passed, so marketing the community.
Yeah, getting the business developer side.
Gotcha.
Yeah, like just getting the dome, getting the election passed, do they do, do they assist in that?
I would think they would do most of the late work on that, I would think.
If I recall.
Well, I will say this, were you there when Mr. Thomas, when O'Keen did this vote? Were you, I was thinking, it was right before, yeah.
I mean, I know, well, from what I recall and dealing with this years ago, the other school did, that was one of the things that I thought was helpful, because I felt we're gonna be able to get.
And our current contract deal with Chisholm Trail ended at the end of this school year?
You know, that was the original agreement, you know, when I visited with the younger Mr. Thomas the other day, he said, obviously, they will do whatever to continue our kids' week, meaning that we've started some juniors in a two-year program, and they would still continue, and then, the price may go up a little bit, we're fortunate enough that part of the Cogent Trust does pay kids' tuition, so that's not something that we have to come out of our pockets.
For now.
For now, it does, yes, and it's in their bylaws of continuing that, so.
Do we know how much of a discount we got on that?
It was substantial.
It was good.
The, it seemed like it was around, right at 2,000 a kid, as opposed to right at 9,500, and those are rough numbers, but it's in that general area. Any questions that you guys want me to pursue, do you want to, maybe look at bringing people in?
Yep.
What's, because the election would happen in what, like in January, February, March, I'm afraid?
And I'm going more for what you guys told me in the interview process, but I think we would have to have it like in February, March, so we'd have to call it a resolution like in December.
What I recall that we had was a different.
So probably what I would like to see is, you know, information pertaining to how many students have been going. Yep. In the past two or three years, as well as the nuts and bolts with the cost, that's gonna be imposed upon taxpayers, yeah.
I'd like to also.
And the cost of we, if we do ongoing, or we just pay as we go.
The state is an independent.
Independent, pay that.
Yeah, if that's an option.
From my perspective, I'd like to know what happens if we can't pass the election.
Yeah, well, I do, I have not, I did not ask Mr. Thomas with Chisholm Trail, when I met with Mr. Hughes, he brought it up, but he said that they will pay, they will do individuals for as long as he's there, so.
Who's the guy, or who's the person?
Dwight Hughes is the new director of Autry Tech, and Kirk Thomas is.
They have a straight trail. Was it straight before, was it something before straight?
We didn't deal with Autry yet, I don't remember who the director was, probably Mr. Hughes. Yes, sir.
I'd like to see what the students would compare the two, as far as with Chisholm Trail not offering many programs, how many more kids might be interested if we had Autry with the programs they have up there.
I know, I know one of the things, the, this one, Dr. Woods, that he brought me upon was the fact that Autry, they said, because they have so many more sending schools, some of their programs are limited, where at the time, I think when Mr. Thomas visited with you, he was accommodating, their programs were not as full, and if they were, so I think that was one of the selling points at the time.
Well, didn't we learn that our students who were going there individually, since we're not a member district, that the member districts got first priority to the, to the different programs? And if there was availability then, when we were paying on a public heart, then maybe our students got in. So if we were a member district, we might be able to get into any of the programs that were available.
And then, do both offer college accreditation, coursework like English, comp warrant and things like that?
So they partner, can you explain that? I know Mr. Tom, I know through their, I know their, their pre-engineering does.
Yes, it's not really college credit, except for the AP math class, if they can club out, but anymore, in order to get college credit from a career tech, you almost have to go and take a test over a certain amount of curriculum. There's no like, if you take this class, they count it in college type thing.
It's such direct.
Right.
Three hours here, three hours on your transcript.
Right, there's a few things, like in auto, that go to OSU IT, there's a few specific things dependent on the, like an OSU IT type.
But nothing that's gonna go towards an associate.
Right.
But what, there are also high school credits, I mean, if we had a student over there taking.
They could get their science.
They could also do their science or math as well.
They have the teacher certification, they can get that, yes. Anything else to?
Any other questions?
I'll try to set up meetings wherever they can be here next month.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, all right. Oh, I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Strumberger. Agenda item 7.1, post-executive session, discuss employment of certified personnel, non-certified personnel, and extra duty assignments or changes for the 21-22 school year.
Move to enter.
Second.
Dr. Matusik.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Aye.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Okay, we're returning to open session. We entered into executive session at seven thirty P M with a five-minute recess. We discussed employment of certified, non-certified personnel and extra duty assignments for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. All members present, including our guest, Mr. Sternberger. No votes were taken and returning to open session at eight oh three. Agenda item seven point two, discussion possible board action regarding employment of school-based social worker on temporary contract for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I would recommend Katie Sodick for that position.
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Luke Lau was first.
Dr. Matusik?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Chet?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Agenda item seven point three, discussion of possible board action regarding employment of two assistant coaches for the high school girls' basketball.
Would recommend Lisa Weaver and Morgan Wannemore for those two positions.
So moved?
Second.
Dr. Matusik?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Chet? Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
Agenda item seven point four, discussion of possible board action regarding the following additions and changes to the extra duty schedule for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as listed.
Not going to read them?
No, I'm not reading them.
Thank you, then I'll move to approve.
Second.
Could you make it?
No.
Dr. Matusik?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Chet?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
He can read this last one.
It's going to be the same way. Agenda item seven point five, discussion of possible board action regarding the employment of the following support personnel for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as listed, A through D.
I think you have to hit the names down.
I'd recommend to the board that employee Brittany Ramirez is classroom maid, Flor Velasco is paraprofessional, Macy Smith is daycare worker, and Jelissa Ramirez is monitor for walking track.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Sternberger.
Dr. Matusik?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Chet?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
We should have had him do that earlier, this one, but before he had.
Agenda item eight, adjourned? Second.
Aye.
Who made the motion?
That was mine, yeah.
Dr. Matusik?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mr. Chet?
The only thing on record you said, yes.
That's right.
Mr. Chet?
Yes.
He said that's right.
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
You bet.